I understand. I think I lose brain cells each time I go in there. Good afternoon, everyone. I understand that Dr. Michael is on the interstate coming back from MSDE, so he'll be joining us when he arrives. This afternoon, we're meeting in work session. We have two agenda items, and we'll be spending perhaps equal time, we've allocated equal time for each of those topics. As you know, work sessions are opportunities for us to plan and to have informal discussion, to ask questions and receive answers from staff about matters that require in-depth examination. There will be no formal action or any votes taken during the work session. So at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Prue, our chief operating officer, for a discussion about the educational facilities master plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, board members of the board. With me this afternoon is Mr. Rollins, Mr. Chriswell, and Mr. Mills, members of our facilities leadership team, to discuss with you our educational facilities master plan. As you know, this is just one of three companion documents that work in cohort together. Of course, we have the comprehensive maintenance plan, which you review in the fall of every year. The educational facilities master plan looks at the scope of our facilities, the scope of our needs from an enrollment perspective, what's going on in terms of the community, in terms of developments, and so forth. And then that leads to our capital improvement program request within the state moving forward. So with that, we'll begin to start taking you through the document. As the slideshow comes up here, the first slide sort of indicates some of the things I just talked to you about in terms of what is in the educational facilities master plan. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rollins, who will start walking you through this year's plan. I think what's key to understand is that the plan is updated annually, so whatever you are going to review today and potentially vote on at the first meeting in June can be changed annually. If we decide we get into the school year next year and that plan has to change based on funding realities or community concerns, we can always come back to the plan next year and make adjustments. So with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Rollins, and we'll take you through the slide presentation.
Can we get the, is the presentation going to come up? Okay. So every year, we like to remind you of what we're entrusted with the care of. We have eleven hundred acres of land that we take care of that these schools are on, parking lots, athletic fields, the outdoor school, everything. And we have forty-seven educational facilities, the total three million, three point three million square feet. So we have a lot to take care of, and luckily, we have Mr. Mills and his maintenance department to do a great job of doing that. We also like to remind you of our ideal preventive maintenance program. So we have forty-seven buildings. If we replaced one every fifty years, we basically need to replace one per year to keep up. And then you can see the other systems that we have and about how many you'd have to do per year to keep up. A roof, for instance, we need to replace them every twenty years or so. So with forty-seven schools, we need to do, on average, a little over two a year, and so forth and so on through the other systems, things like that. I'd like to start with some facts. Of those forty-seven schools, twenty-four of them were either constructed or modernized in the nineteen seventies or earlier, and have had no major further modifications since that time. It's ten elementary, six middle, and high, and two instructional centers. Issues at these facilities that aren't addressed and planned systemic projects, there's three of those schools that have no public utilities, no water or sewer, they're on septic and well. Sixteen of those schools are partially open or just open. There's thirty-one portable classrooms located at those schools, and seventeen of them have combined parent bus drop-off loops, things like that, inadequate parking and traffic situations, especially nowadays where more people transport their kids to school by Also, in this plan, we wanted to note that we have many schools in our system that are less than three hundred students. And there's good things about that, and there's, but there's operational efficiencies that can be had with larger schools. Similar counties to us, say Carroll County has about two thousand more students, but they have six less schools than we do. Frederick County has about double our student population, but has about one and a half times the number of facilities. So we took a look at how, what the numbers would look like efficiency-wise if we were building larger schools versus to replace smaller schools. And we think that at a seven hundred eighty-five seat capacity school, it costs about eleven hundred dollars less per student than equal number of students, or than a student at a smaller school. So if you add the numbers up, it's about a nine hundred thousand dollar annual savings if you're teaching the same number of kids in a larger school than in three separate or two separate smaller schools. So there's operational efficiencies that can be had. So that leads into our, our plan, which is, we think we need to begin replacement or modernization of our schools as soon as possible. Implement a plan to replace or modernize one school every two years. Close and consolidate populations, school populations, to reduce both construction and operating costs. So in that, we're looking at a plan that might replace the twenty-four schools that were pre-nineteen eighty with eighteen schools. Reduces our inventory from forty-seven to forty-one buildings. With those operational savings that we just talked about, we think just in the initial four schools that we're proposing over the next ten years, we could save about three million dollars in operation cost annually. And this would result in an eighty-year replacement cycle, not the fifty that's ideal, but, but maybe eighty's more reasonable based on the resources we, we have. So our ten-year plan would be to open four elementary schools, one in two thousand twenty-four that we replace Hickory and Fountain Rock. We'd indicated previously that we'd like to build that school right out here because we have the land, and so that there's no land cost inherent in that, in that project. In two thousand twenty-six, we think we'd like to replace Greenbrier, Old Forge, and Cascade with a new school. We don't have property for that yet. We'd have to identify property and, and property that we can bring public utilities to. In two thousand twenty-eight, we'd like to open a new school to replace Fountaindale and Potomac Heights. Again, we'd need new property with public utilities that can be brought to it. And finally, in two thousand thirty, open a school that replaces and consolidates M.A.K. Daub and Funkstown. We think that we can fit that school on M.A.K. Daub or Funkstown property. We just have to figure out what the best way to go there would be. So what does those, that ten-year plan accomplish with those four schools? In total square footage, it reduce, it reduces the amount of square footage we'd have to care for by fourteen thousand square feet, reduces the acreage we have to care for by sixty-five acres. At the same time, it increases our seat capacity by almost six hundred seats, increases safety in that there's no more open schools, and in that there's no portable classrooms, and all the other things that we do with our new schools in terms of the security features. It's a reduction in the total number of buildings, of course, decrease in operations costs that we talked about, and building four schools versus, four new schools replaces versus modernizing or replacing each of the nine schools saves a lot of construction costs, we think around fifty-five million dollars, thirty-two of which would be the, the local piece of that. So it saves a lot of money operationally and a lot of money from a construction side of things. It's still a heavy lift, though. I don't want anybody to discount that, that building that many schools in a short period of time is something that's not difficult or, or won't take a significant amount of money. Educationally, these new schools provide additional dedicated pre-kindergarten space, so we won't be squeezing them in spaces that maybe weren't intended for it, provides newer state-of-the-art facility for more students sooner. We can affect students in nine schools in, in ten years by, by following this plan. Increases educational opportunities, provides full-time support staff, additional rounds, better medicates student-teacher ratios. When you have a small school, it's hard to balance, you know? When you get that situation where you have forty kids in a grade, they're twenty and twenty, when it goes up to fifty-five kids, you got to make a decision, or sixty kids, do you do three classes or do you have larger class sizes? It's easier to spread them around and, if you have more rounds. And we provide full-size gyms and playfields for students. Also, there's some community considerations. We could work with the county possibly to create recreation space on the school sites that we, that we choose. We could have more green space, maybe even community centers that are built adjacent to the school. I mean, these are all things we can partner with the county if, if they so choose, and maybe there's some economy there, there's some needs maybe the county has that they can address on our school sites. So this is a calendar that shows the four projects over the next ten years. Specifically, we've highlighted fiscal year twenty-one, which this year, in the fall, we'll come back to you with the CIP, where we'll be asking for the last installment of payment on Sharpsburg Elementary School, and an initial payment from the county to start the facility analysis and the planning for the first of the four schools. Also, in twenty-one, this fall, we'll be, we're looking at these four systemic projects, two roofs, an HVAC replacement, and a chiller replacement. All these systems are at the end of their lifecycle. I know Mark's had to work on a, on a North High chiller a little bit over, over time, and at Smithsburg, too, with the HVAC system.
Just real quick, South High, we've been working on a roof there for, it seems like five years.
Well, we worked on it, we put a roof on, a half the roof on three years ago, two years ago.
And we did a portion of it the summer before, it's kind of an emergency repair that we had approved through the state.
This is the final phase.
Final phase of that roof.
And it's, it's been in the CIP for the last two years and has not been funded. But it's, it's actually stepped up at this point that it is our most emerging project, did not get funded this year, every, all the others did. So we believe it'll be funded by the state in, in twenty-one.
Thank you. So beyond the ten-year plan in these four schools, we have to keep moving and keep replacing schools every two years. So we'd look to replace the remaining fifteen of the twenty-four schools every two years. That includes six high schools, six middle schools, one elementary, and two instructional. And when I say replace, it could be a modernization. I don't mean to think that anybody think that we're going to necessarily build a whole new building. It could just be a total gut and modernization of an existing school, but they are significant projects. We'd consider further consolidations where warranted at the elementary or secondary level. Those have not been identified, but certainly with school populations as they are, we, and, and over time, when we look at enrollments, we might have to make some further decisions. Nothing on the table yet, but it might be opportunities there again to save some operational and construction money. Overall, we're thinking eighteen buildings can be constructed in thirty-two years. Just as, as a note, the, the buildings that we're replacing, there were seventeen buildings of the twenty-four that were built in the decade of the seventies. They built seventeen in ten years. This plan asks for seven, eighteen buildings to be built in thirty-two years. So I don't, I don't think it's too, too much of a stretch. So the outcomes of this, reduce overall capital cost, build fewer, more efficient buildings, efficiency in terms of energy and personnel and, and just upkeep, community pride, commitment to education encourages economic development, opportunities to integrate community centers and recreation facilities if the county would like to do that. And it's a long-term, if you have a long-term plan in place where everybody knows when their school's going to be affected, that, that helps. If, if somebody's saying, why them and not us? You can say, well, if you look at the plan, we have your schools coming six or seven years from now in, in this order. And, and as, as long as we order them in a way that makes sense, the public then can buy into that. If we, if we don't come up with a plan of action such as this, then the cost to replace and modernize these, these older buildings is just going to continue to increase. Student opportunities will lag because the kids won't have the facilities that they deserve. Buildings will wear out eventually, Mark's maintenance costs will increase, money we do spend on maintenance could be better fund modernizations, which in turn reduce maintenance backlog, or we could leave it for another generation.
So I, I think, you know, we'll close back sort of with the opening slide, again, reminding you what the, the facilities master plan is, that it is updated annually, and I think there's one more flying, that it is also the basis for our five-year capital improvement program, so you'll be seeing that as we move towards the fall. The timeline in terms of this proposal is you have the work session today, an opportunity definitely to ask any questions you see fit about the plan that staff has presented. Believe we have a placeholder on the June fourth board meeting for approval of the educational facilities master plan. It does have to be sent in an approved form to the state by the end of June, so that's where, where staff is seeking your approval over the next month. We believe as staff that is our obligation to present to you, our policymakers at the Board of Education level, what we believe are the needs of the school system in a lot of facets. As it relates to today, it's one of the facility needs of our school system. We recognize that we then have to advocate further with you to county government and state government for the appropriate funding, and at the current funding levels that have been presented through county budgets, this plan just probably does not come to fruition. But we believe it best represents what the needs are for the school system. You know, we, we need systemics, and we need some modernizations and replacements. Doing only systemics allows the buildings to continue to age, doing all building replacements allows systemics in other buildings that are not in the near term to age and potentially fail. So we, we have a, a bit of a quandary we're working through. Staff represents and, and understands that, you know, the funding realities may not truly meet this plan, but we wanted to present to you what we believe are the needs of the system, and we can change to meet what you believe are the needs of the system. This is a plan we're presenting to you, but we're definitely available to make any, any necessary changes that are, that are, needs that you foresee or are concerns that are raised by the community as well. So I think with that, staff's available to take any questions that you may have.
I have a question about Lincolnshire Elementary. I know that it was built, I believe, in fifty-four. I'm sure it's had some upgrades, but I know that it's small for its population, for the, the students, the cafeteria is small, and that's where they hold their assemblies, and they can't all go at once because, you know, the gym is small, and, and I was just wondering, I didn't see it on the master plan where it might fall.
It would be beyond these twenty-four schools. That school was considered to be completely modernized in nineteen ninety-seven.
Oh, really?
Yeah. By, by the, by the state, that's how they look at those facilities. When you go through and modernize it, the addition that was put on and some new parking and things, it was, it was considered completely modernized. So its age is actually counted from nineteen ninety-seven at this point.
So in theory, it's twenty-two years old.
Okay.
Fifty, sixty years away from the modernization.
Based on this, based on this plan.
Based on this plan. That's the reality, the people need to understand what this plan means.
Okay.
Talking anything that's recently been replaced, even if we could be as aggressive as this plan is, it's years and years away from anything that's been recently touched in the last fifteen or twenty years. It's fifty, sixty years away for those schools.
And, and to that point, you know, it, next summer in twenty twenty, we'll be opening Sharpsburg Elementary. It would be slated to be replaced in twenty-one hundred, eighty years old, based on a two years per school with, two years per school with consolidation would be on an eighty-year cycle. So year twenty-one hundred, we would replace the new Sharpsburg.
I can see why you added Cascade. I mean, part of Cascade dates back to when Calvin Coolidge was President of the United States, so, I mean, but I was intrigued to see that it was thrown in with Greenbrier and Old Forge. That's quite a geographical distance of three schools. So where do you see building a school central to all three locations now? Any ideas, any thought given to that, or, I mean?
Well, somewhere between them all, but I mean, it would be, the, no, seriously, we're looking along possible, I hate to say it, but Jefferson Pike, I, I hate to show our hands to people that might have land along there.
I understand that, I, I understand that. Even Greenbrier, which is closer to Boonsborough than it is to Jefferson Boulevard, Jefferson Pike, whatever you want.
We actually looked, I think, as the crow flies, you know, granted, roads don't go direct, but as the crow flies, it's six miles from Greenbrier to Old Forge.
I think about nine by road.
Far from Cascade, Smithsburg?
No.
About seven miles?
It's, it would definitely be, you know, longer bus rides for some kids and, and some shorter, and also, well, go ahead, Tim. You want to talk about the redistricting?
With all the consolidations, it would be a good opportunity for us to look at the adjacent attendant zones, and just because two particular facilities would be consolidated wouldn't mean it would just be the students from those facilities going to the new one. There, there could be a redistricting where better efficiencies or transportation times or opportunities could be had. So I think it would be a good opportunity that the board could consider to look at that if, if they come to fruition.
So the, the schools' boundaries that border Boonsborough, Eastern, Ruthan Monroe, Pangborn, close, they'd be one, one district removed, but Paramount, Potomac Heights, of course, Potomac Heights is, is one of our things, but they'd all be considered and look at redistricting kids, and many, many boundaries had changed, just not a consolidation of the three.
And, and again, staff understands this is some of the challenges that a plan like this presents to the board, that, you know, it, it may not be popular in the community, but we feel it's in, in the best interest of our facility plan and the finances of, of expanding and, and being able to handle the expense of our facility upgrades moving forward over the long term.
Any other questions, comments?
If I could.
I think it's a great plan, trust me. Nothing wrong, nothing in there that I see that gives me pause other than the fact that you know, I do, money is still, there's a common front. Right now, Jackie has spoken to this a thousand times since we've been on the board, but where do you get the money to do it? And it's such a trick to get it and do it. Market is in a position that you can get away with. Farmland is cheap right now, but farmland doesn't have water or sewer. Water and sewer sites are, they're still, they're getting sold.
Right.
If, if we do have, and you'll tell us on shore here directly or in the next couple of months, have some development, and it's successful, and it starts heating up, everything goes up in here.
And with, to that end, too, with the plan, we actually can increase seat capacity on less square footage and be much more efficient with our building space.
I like it, guys, as always.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the proposed consolidations, and you've indicated that there would be a significant savings when we have schools that are currently housing three hundred or less students to go to a five-round school. So my question is, would these planned consolidations for the, the three that we're talking about, would they start out at perhaps a three round with the potential to go to a five round like we did with Jonathan Hager, or, or would we be constructing from the get-go a five-round school?
Could be both.
Could be both?
It depends on enrollment. Where we can, we would build a five round, but if the enrollments at the, at the schools we're consolidating or the surrounding schools, too, don't support building a five round, and you know that any, any space we build beyond the enrollment we have would have to be all on the local dime. So in that case, we could look to maximize our state funding by building a three or a four-round school with the ability to have an addition just like Jonathan Hager. We don't know right now.
For, for school number one, I did look at the current projections, and we could have submitted for full funding this year of a five-round facility and been fully funded to the maximum state participation of the Fountain Rock and Hickory, yes, sir. So that, had we been ready to go, we, and based on the current state regulations, which they're still changing a little bit, we're seeing new stuff every, every month and trying to keep up with that, so.
Enrollment's changed from year to year, and when we get six years out from here, it could be something that we're thinking we're building a five round. At this point in time, based on projections, turns out we need to build something less, or we could have to build something more, so I mean.
Can we keep our eyes on current enrollment and projections?
Yes, ma'am. And it is the Jonathan Hager model, where we would certainly advocate to build a larger core so we could add additional rounds, we try to do some smart planning, so just like Jonathan Hager, when we have to go do that, we can impact the staff and the students as minimally as possible.
Has there been some discussion in the facilities committee about design of these schools and perhaps trying to save the cost of, by using, you know, similar or exact designs?
So we can look at prototype designs and, and possibly do that, and design the first school in such a way that we think we could reuse it over and over again. A school like Sharpsburg takes advantage of the grade it has, so it wouldn't be something you could use just anywhere. We can look at that, but it's, it's really important, if you're going to do prototyping, that you build them in rapid succession. If you, if you were to take these four schools and not build them within a ten-to-twelve year period, but instead a sixteen-to-twenty year period, by the time you get out in time, it might be that you really don't want that design anymore because educational delivery is changing, education has changed. And so we always want to be flexible, so, and, and there's a lot of folks that say they're building prototype designs, but they're actually, they change just a little bit every time because they're trying to keep up with the time. Certainly, the core of the building, we can probably standardize. We pretty much do already. And, and keep in mind, too, that every site is different, so the, the savings in design might be in the building itself, but not necessarily in the civil engineering to bring parking lots and things, and all those, the grading is different at every site.
I think the hope with that on the prototype as well is that potentially you can have savings in construction because a contractor is now familiar with what he did the last time, and the design is the same. So the, the contractor's familiarity with your plan and the design allows him to build it faster and more efficiently, which then results in savings in the actual construction as well. So in theory, you know, a, a contractor can be more aggressive in his pricing and win multiple jobs in a row, and move a construction team from one project to the next project, from phase to phase. You may be finishing with some of his, his workers on school number one while they're starting site and foundation work on school number two, and he's moved that team off project one into project two, and he can keep his workforce moving.
If he's a little bitter.
If he's organized, which results in, in savings to the contractor as well.
And, and again, spreading it out, you lose some of that ability to have those kind of efficiencies and possible savings, so.
Mrs. Fisher?
Has there been any analysis on the current developments that we know are out there as well as perhaps some future ones that have been mentioned here and there? In relationship to the projects, the next several projects, I'm thinking about, well, of course, some developers will provide. of course, some developers will provide land, but if there's no developers that are likely to provide land, shouldn't we be identifying, maybe not publicly, but identifying sites and trying to get commissioners to bank some money to purchase these sites, the way Frederick and many other counties do?
Well, yes.
But, I mean, are the developments, are there developments close enough to any of the areas that you think?
We've had discussion with a developer in the Boonsborough area about a possible site for a future...
Well, I know Boonsborough has been an ongoing, but...
South County, but other than that, I don't know of any.
There's a development that's still in process and working through some things in Smithburg, it's been in the paper, I won't say the name, Clover Hill, yeah, it's been publicized enough, it's still in process and it's got a little ways to go, but that could come to fruition, which while not in the Old Forge, Greenbrier, or Cascade District, it's certainly in the Smithburg attendant zone and would have an impact to, to that potential project, it certainly potentially drive up some enrollment.
But I don't know that they have any land that they'd be able to...
Correct, yeah, I don't believe there's any land in that particular development. And there's, I'll get phone calls from the municipality planners every once in a while. We know of a few plan developments potentially coming in the Funkstown area. There's some that are actually out towards this particular building that are, have been talked, but nothing, nothing formal has really been submitted to where they've sent me an actual drawing that I could share with the Facility Committee. It's just been, hey, I'm calling you to give you a heads-up, this, this might be coming to you on the radar. Honestly, if I get 10 calls like that a year, maybe one shows up sometime, you know, that year with an actual plan.
This plan calls first to identify a couple sites. I would hope if we start going through that process to identify a couple sites for these schools, that we can broaden that search and talk about master planning with the county and maybe identify some other sites, that we could do just what you're saying. Maybe in concert with a developer, or maybe not, but, you know. I would hope that collectively, the staffs would be smart enough to be able to do that, so, yes.
There's only so much land.
That's correct.
And we go to build a school if there's not enough somewhere.
That's correct.
It's kind of hard. I know it's working at Sharpsburg, but you can't always build on the same site that's occupied.
I say this facetiously, but as I look around this room, some of us in here are getting to the age where we could just say, let's leave this to another generation, I mean, you know.
Right.
I mean...
If I could speak from the heart, I think every one of us, maybe not you, most of us around the table, we benefited from folks back in the 60s and the 70s who had a vision for the county, and they built that vision. I went to the old Boonsborough Middle School, the one that was built in the 20s, and then matriculated over to the high school, which was under construction. Dr. Michael was there during the whole construction of that school. And I can tell you, maybe I have this job because they were constructing that school while I was going to school, because it was, it was pretty cool. You could look through and see all the construction going on. But we can talk about facts and dollars and land and all that, but our schools, they reflect our community. They reflect how we care for our community. You know, when we open a new school, we're telling folks, we care about you, you know? Wayne, when, when, when we went into, when a new school was built, the first time we hit the floor in the gym playing basketball, it was awesome, you know? I played in the band, they had a giant band room, new science labs for Mr. Shamel. Finally, he finally got a room that was, you know, worthy of his, of his expertise. You know, I felt as a kid really lucky and proud of my community for being able to do that and have that given to me and those opportunities. 50 years ago, we were opening Williamsport High School, you know? And so whether or not you were a student or, or staff, you guys also benefited from these newer schools. Wayne, you went to South High, right? It was built in the 50s, so it was not even 10 years old as you were going there, probably. And one by one, in the 70s, they replaced all these schools that were built in the 20s and the 30s. They were 40 and 50 years old. They seemed older, I know when I went there, but, so like, and every community was affected. You know, they built things in Clear Spring and Smithburg and Boonsborough. It was spread around the county. They did it. So this plan, I know it's expensive, but it's, it's for the whole community, and if we don't do something, we're not going to give our children and our grandchildren the opportunities that were given to every one of us by people that thought about it. So I know I'm editorializing, I apologize from, from staff, but I just think it's important to say, and it's not really for this group, which I think agrees with what I'm saying, hopefully, but also just for the county in general, so.
I agree with Mr. Reiner, it's a great plan, but as Mr. Prue said, it may not come to fruition, and we know why it may not come to fruition.
I think we're not doing our due diligence if we don't keep pressing and asking for this, whether it happens now or in eight years.
I've been here over 16 years, and I don't know how many schools we've built.
Right.
I mean, I've lost count, honest to God, I've lost count.
1213, something like that, seems like.
Started almost the time I walked up on Commonwealth Avenue to the office and, you know, by Morgansville.
Morgansville, Rockland Woods.
Rockland Woods.
Academy, Esther, Sailor.
Those were being built at the same time, Antietam, which was...
Ruth Ammon Road.
Boyd is due, I mean, he had basically begged for Antietam Academy. I'm going to do it, didn't see a reason for it. It's not going to improve attendance and so on and so forth. Thousand reasons not to do it, but it got done.
Right.
And now, and it's just been going on from there, so, you know, and, and we get state funding, you know, we have, we don't get all the state funding we can get because it's not getting matched here. But the state appreciates what we've done with 60, 70, 80-year-old schools. What you said about Lincolnshire, it's a 20-year-old school. And it's no different than a home. You know, a house, a house has a 20 or a 50-year life expectancy. You don't do anything to it for 50 years, it's going to fall down. In fact, if you're doing something, the effective age goes down, 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 has more value than you're, more used. We've got to keep asking. Unfortunately, that becomes cynical, because we ask and we make sense, get nothing out of it. Yeah, we'll keep asking.
I think we might talk about the committee and...
One of the requests we've had the last two meetings, I believe, with the Commissioners is for a joint capital improvement committee between WCPS staff and county staff, kind of government staff. And I've been chairing that committee at Dr. Michael's request with Scott Hobbs, who's Director of Engineering for the county. We've met a couple of times. I think we'll try to provide some sort of a briefing during the next joint meeting, I believe, which is June 11th, with the Commissioners. But we've started to take some work with them on, you know, we've walked them through actually last year's educational facilities master plan, taken them through that presentation, taken them through the facilities inventory, how we assess schools. We actually had the last meeting last week, actually at Hickory Elementary School, and they, they were able to tour the facility while they were there to get a sense of, you know, this is, these are the types of schools we're talking about, these are some of the facility issues we have, here's some of the backlog maintenance, here's what it sounds like in the middle of an open school. So consider yourself a seven-to-10-year-old child and you're trying to learn in this environment, and some of the challenges, some of the security concerns in those open schools. So trying to walk through that with county staff to, you know, perhaps gain some support, at least at the staff level. And, and we've lamented together that they have some of the same concerns with county facilities in terms of longstanding backlog of maintenance on roads and bridges and some of their own infrastructure that, that is there as well, water treatment facilities. So, you know, it is definitely a shared community concern that we're just a piece of.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just wondering if, I mean, we have asked, we'll continue to ask, but I wonder if there would be any advantage to hiring someone to plan an actual cohesive program to convince the Commissioners of our needs? Somebody who can sell it better than perhaps we have the ability to.
I think we have the plan, and I think we have fine salesmen, I think we have fine spokesmen. I think it, as Wayne and Stan have pointed out, we have an excellent plan here, and it's not lost on me, Rob's comments, you know, how we have benefited from those who had a plan and worked it, had a vision and worked it for us. I think we need to be strong advocates, and we need to be the voice, and we need to do all that we can do to make sure that, that we're heard and that the needs are recognized. And it's frustrating, and, and often we feel like we're getting nowhere and we're not being heard, but I don't think that we can allow ourselves to be discouraged and become complacent and just say, oh, well, it is what it is, and, and we'll make do, we'll keep taking care of the things that we have, as we've always done, because that's what we're noted for. And, you know, that's not, that's not doing right by our kids, that's not doing right by our county, so.
I think when Mr. Rollins was talking about the schools that did get built in the past, and I went to South High when it was new, it wasn't just the school board that had the vision and the will. I think the Commissioners had an entirely different view and attitude towards it that it does now. And it's like, most of those Commissioners have been in there for so long, and we've, you know, practically beat them up trying to convince them, and we're not getting anywhere with them.
Would it be helpful, instead of taking staff through a school like Hickory, that we take Commissioners and do that tour? Would that be helpful?
Absolutely.
It couldn't hurt.
I say we try that. I mean, they, how can you ignore it when you, when you see it firsthand?
Perhaps even a side-by-side comparison. I mean, I think a lot of them have been through our newer schools, they probably have been through Jonathan Hager, but if you see them juxtaposed right next to each other in a short timeframe, it may have more impact.
Right. And they've, I'm sure they visit schools and they go to programs, but they don't take the tour like you took with the staff to point out the things that we need for them to see.
Sure.
Yes.
One thing, just a thought. Commissioners are political animals, I mean, let's face it. We need to convince them, we, we may not be able to convince them, probably can at some point. My thought process was, you know, the two schools that we're thinking about, the consolidation efforts, the next things on the drawing board, why don't we have a town hall that we send out invitations to everybody in all the schools that are going to be impacted by that? And have a town hall here where you guys can go through, here's what we're doing, here's what, how this will impact your kids and the kids in that area, you know, for years to come. If we can get, you know, people here, which I think, you know, they look and see the name of their school and how that, you know, they may be going to a new school, maybe we could get some people in. Get some people in, and those people become advocates, could change the dynamic, you know, a little bit at least.
It's not a bad idea. And you'll also hear dissenters there too, which isn't a, which is not a bad thing at all, because we, we learn from everyone, and, and we can gauge the, the public's acceptance of the, of the plan.
Schools that might be impacted by redistricting in, you know, in that, in that area where we're thinking about putting a school.
Right.
And that way you get more people, the more people we have and the more people we're talking, the more publicity that you get, the more it impacts the people with the pocketbooks.
It, it may be an opportunity, Mr. Reiner, you know, to, to sort of see what the ground swell of support is for a plan like this. You know, staff is concerned that there could be community backlash for a plan of this nature that does call for closing of smaller schools and potential redistricting. And, you know, we're not lost on, on the pain that that can cause in the community. And so that is, so a lot of discussion that we've had on that front as well, is what, what kind of pain is this going to cause on our community? What kind of support do we have from our community to actually consolidate and build some new schools and, and get some things rolling? So we could hear both and decide from that that we want to back away from this plan before we get too far down the road.
And if it's the will of the community and the Commissioners and the Board to maintain smaller schools and reconstruct them, we don't have an issue with that. We're just trying to find the most efficient plan based on the scarce resources that we have right now. So, I mean, if everybody wants to back a different plan that, that, that keeps those, because I understand the importance of smaller community schools and, and some of the feelings that folks have about the education that can be delivered, or the, you know, knowing every kid and all those things that people bring up with, with the smaller schools, and those, those are not unimportant things to talk about. Our plan is based on the resources that are, there might not be enough resources to do what we're asking, let alone reconstruct nine schools if we were to replace the ones.
Do it, you know, think about when, I'm not sure summer is the best time, maybe early fall, once kids are in and all here has started, try to pull something like that, just a thought.
I think I've heard from a number of people, they're not, they're going to be dissenters in this plan because it's not what they would desire to happen with their community schools. So I think it's what Mr. Rollins indicated, this is not a proposal of, of staff that we want to support because we believe it's the best plan. It's a proposal after two or three years in a row of hearing, you know, we're going to be 250 years between schools, which the county Commissioners don't want to hear anything about. I mean, they've made it clear, they don't want to hear that anymore. So I asked staff to come up with another plan. They've come up with another plan, this is an 80-year between-school cycle, but the reality of it is, based on the money that's in the CIP, I don't know whether it passed today or whether it's going to be passed here soon at the county level, it will not support this plan. It is half the money that's needed to support this plan. So we're still looking at 160 years between schools. And, and to staff's credit, they're, they're just working, trying to come up with something workable within the resources we have. We understand the county's dilemma, but this is a very challenging problem. I, you know, for me, in the, you know, immediate, short-term, we've got to keep kids cool when they need to be cool, dry when they need to be dry all the time, warm when they need to be warm, and we will do that. We're not going to have immediate failures. But this is a long-term crisis that's going to build quickly on us. As we forego state money, which we're going to actually need money beyond the state money in the near future, but as we forego state money, this thing is going to compound quickly. It's going to compound quickly, and our deferred maintenance is going to skyrocket, and we are going to dig ourselves into a deep, deep hole here in Washington County that's going to be very difficult to get out of. And it's just a reality we've got to talk about. I think we talked about it at our joint meeting coming up, I'd request the Board, allow staff to do a similar presentation. We're just trying to have an open conversation about this. It's probably well beyond, the challenges will come well beyond the careers of most of the politicians that'll be in the room.
And staff.
And staff. But we're just trying to be forward-thinking with what's happening here with the capital plan. So we'll be seeking your approval on the plan on, on June 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our second agenda item, which is the proposed modified FY 2020 General Fund operating budget. Dr. Michael, we're happy that you were able to navigate your way up here to Washington County from the great city of Baltimore, and that you're able to make the presentation to us.
Thank you. We, we were here early this morning and made a quick trip to Baltimore for the Teacher of the Year reception. Josh Edwards, our Teacher of the Year for 2019, was recognized by the State Board today. Dr. Harding's, well, he took a picture of everybody, but being the State Board President, but he was also seated at our lunch table, and we kind of saw lunch coming to the table, and that was our exit point, so we were glad to make it back here. Today, what we want to do is walk through the changes in the FY 20 budget. I think the Board members have the line-by-line document, they also have the 40-couple-page booklet. What I'd like to do is just kind of take it section by section in the first three or four pages of your line-by-line document, and then they ask you to stop at any point for questions. So as we look at that Section 1A, that's the anticipated incremental general fund increase, the one... The one change we've seen to that is line 2. We don't know from where, from how, but the county commissioners have funded $24,199 above maintenance of effort. So the other number previously noted there, the 1.9 million, is the money that's required by law that they give based on the low effort designation that they have, but they did supply $24,199 above maintenance of effort this year. The other big change is the adder on line 4 and 5. So I guess just by blind luck, whatever, when we moved to full-day pre-K the last couple of years, as we've expanded that effort, in the Kerwin bill, the Senate Bill 1030, the state is providing partial funding for all full-day pre-K programs from last September. Fortunately, our count last September was 806, and we were supplied with $3.8 million because of that move. Had we stayed with all pretty much half-day pre-K programs, we'd only have been funded for our 100 and seems like about 70 full-day slots that we had a number of years ago. So that was a great opportunity to pick up 3.8 million, and it's obviously going to help support our pre-K efforts. Also in the money was teacher incentive salary fund, about 2.5 million. It was wealth equalized. We're hoping that we're going to be able to work with WC TA and the board, and the state has required some approvals on that, and we'll be able to secure that for our teachers. We're very excited about that. The next sections, lines 6, 7, and 8, have not changed. So that's kind of our revenue sources. At this point, non-restricted revenue sources into the general fund will be $14,352,387. As we need to move to the next section of funding, Section B, this is anticipated restricted funds. So we're going to receive about 1.9 million in new special ed money, can be used for special ed or for other Kerwin initiatives. So that's about 1.9 million. We're receiving $828,000 in struggling learners grant, we'll talk about that in a minute, but it's targeted at K to 3 students for reading and math intervention, primarily tutoring. Concentrated poverty, $248,000, can only be used at this point at Antietam Academy. We're not 100% sure we're eligible for this restricted grant, but it has some very definite things that have to be, the money needs to be used for. And then every county was supplied with the potential for restricted grant for $83,000 for a health coordinator. So we believe we are eligible for that money. So we move down into the next section, position changes for the FY 20 budget. Section A has not changed, the Point 2 clerical, staff at Tech High, the four bus drivers that we've added as we've had to take over contractor routes that contractors were no longer interested in. So that Section A has not changed. Section B, new positions for FY 20, there's some changes here. As we've looked at our data for the last couple of years and as we've tracked our data going through this year, we believe that we're going to continue to see improvements in reading. I think we'll see improvements in math, but not at the rate that we need to. And I think we need to offer more support to students, to staff, and we're recommending the position, an additional position with elementary math content specialists. So we have one right now, and we're looking to move that into two positions. We've looked at the elementary schools, kind of divided them up between Title I, schools that have been identified as targeted support schools, some geographic locations, and looked at ways that we can better support those schools. Our people are constantly being asked to come to the schools and support the schools, provide professional development, there's just not enough resources there. The next three lines, 2, 3, and 4, the testing clerical position, the two pre-K lines, the 20 teachers, 21 IAs, that was in the original budget. Line 5 is actually something that happened, just didn't reflect in the other budget. So we have added five middle school positions, most of which were transferred from elementary. So we've had this large shift of population over the last two years. We had large fourth and fifth grade classes that have now moved into middle school, and our middle school population of students has grown substantially, so we've transferred staff to middle school to try to address some of the increasing class sizes there. We still have the three contingency positions that were in the original budget. In our striving readers grant, federal grant that we have that Laura Hanks oversees and Dr. Q, we have lead teacher positions in there, so really using that title because it's already in the contract. These are stipend positions, really model teachers. So we've posted for reading teachers or teachers, just general teachers, where people can come and see them implement the reading curriculum, the English Language Arts curriculum, they support professional development. That model has worked well. We've had a significant number of people visit those classrooms, and we see that as a way of supporting all teachers. So we like to duplicate that effort with math by adding 14 stipend positions. Again, we would advertise these, pre-K, grade 1, or K, 1, 2, 3, 4, you know, looking for a model teacher that people can, there are often teachers who are saying, "Show me." And we like to provide, you know, substitute, an opportunity for people to go and see a teacher in action with the new curriculum, new strategies that we're using. Again, it's worked well in reading, we've had a lot of visits, we've had a lot of support, and we want to expand that in mathematics. Line 8 is the expansion of our English Language learner teachers, it was in the original budget. Line 9, with the new resources, we'd like to add a secondary mentor teacher. I think this will bring our mentor teachers up to five. At one point, we had eight mentor teachers. As we look at ways to, you know, retain our teachers, support our new teachers, we just think this would be a good strategy. So this will be a math-science-type resource teacher is what we're targeting there to help support a substantial number of secondary teachers we've hired in those areas. The council social workers are the ones who are in the original budget, the three professionals, four technology, the ones in the original budget. An HR recruitment retention coordinator, again, this is a new position that we've added since the Kerwin money has been made available. Our target here is looking at the workload we have right now in HR, it's difficult to keep up with the workload. It seems like there's going to be some new requirements, the board's going to be reviewing some new things that are going to be required by new legislation, particularly some additional follow-up with people that may have been under investigation or accused of various things, going to create a substantial amount of paperwork. We're going to look at this position as an opportunity to look for a more diverse workforce. This position will work on ESP positions, administrative positions, teacher positions, and support a wide variety of things in HR. And we have staff here that can answer additional questions if you have those. And the next couple of lines, 13 and 14, are just the Social Security medical benefits that go with the rest of the lines above. Section C, you've seen item 1 before, item 2 is really a redeployment of that shift of the K to 5 teachers. Some of those, we've moved into the pre-K positions, some of those, we've moved to middle school positions. So let's just reflect that change in our budget book. Are there any questions on Section 2, A, B, or C that we can answer at this point? Okay, as we look at Section 3A, other needs, we've had to make some third-quarter budget adjustments to account for growing need with our school connection here with the internet services. Now we reflect it out in the new budget. Technology licensing money was there in the original budget, the pre-K money was in the original budget. Lines 4 and 5 reflect diesel fuel and utility costs, again, that we've had to note in our third-quarter budget adjustments, we've seen an increase in those areas. Obviously, if fuel goes back down, we'd be able to reap some savings here. If fuel continues to go up, we might not have enough money in this area at this point. Lines 6, 7, and 8 are lines that you saw in the original budget. Line 9 is a new line, again, based on the delay in the ability to replace schools, we're going to have to increase our maintenance efforts. So line 9 is an opportunity to increase our maintenance funds, just to try to keep up on what I'm seeing as the ongoing challenges that we have in schools. Even simple things, painting floors that are coming up, dirty things, you know, just dirty floors, things like that, that just no longer can be scrubbed or cleaned. So see, in our maintenance line, a substantial amount of furniture at some point that's going to have to be replaced, cracked chairs, broken chairs, things like that. Again, as we replace new schools, we would have a whole school of new furniture, and we would redeploy the best of the rest of the furniture. Without opening a new school every year like we have for many years, we're going to have the need to keep up even with simple items like furniture. Section 4A is compensation, the changes there really are reflected down in line 4. In the original budget with the board, we had a 3% increase in healthcare cost. At this point, staff's looked at it, our consultants have looked at it, they believe we can get away with a 2% increase in healthcare costs. So that's a good thing for our employees, and itself saves the Board of Education money right now in the short term as well. Line 6 and 7, we're optimistic that our sick leave cash-out plans that we've agreed to with the teachers and hope to agree to with ESP will work out, and we want to pay that money out to teachers. I'm hoping we'll have that opportunity. Line 7 reflects the 2.5 million in Kerwin money. It also reflects the amount of money that it takes to get the teacher's contract, a placeholder to get the teacher's contract to 3%, which is part of the Kerwin requirement to take advantage of the teacher incentive fund of $2.5 million. Any questions on Section 4? Then we move into the restricted funds. So Section 5A is restricted funds. Again, this is identified as special ed, but then it's also identified can be used for any other Kerwin initiatives. We don't have a lot of direction on that right now, what we plan to use these resources for. Last year, we added mid-year 18 IA positions. Obviously, they weren't fully funded for the whole year, so we're going to maintain those in the new budget. So we'll use some of this money to help support that effort there in line 1 and 2. Looking at line 3 and 4, we see a need to expand, not only for special ed, but for other children that have challenging behavior problems that we might not be able to maintain in their current building or current school, our classroom. We might need, have the need to create some specialized programs, so we've allocated two teachers and the ability to add two IAs to each of those rooms to support multi-age level, probably all elementary classroom for behavioral support for students. If we don't have the need to pull the classrooms out that way, if there's a need to expand additional support directly in the classroom, we would probably reallocate these resources in the form of IAs or teachers to support regular instruction, regular classrooms. Line 5, math equity coordinator, I can't even begin to describe how many things are changing with the equity expectations, disparity between special ed, regular ed, gap closure. I mean, we have a whole series of terms and new numbers and new data that's being presented constantly. We have a position similar to this in the reading side, actually two positions, where they constantly are looking at individual plans for students and creating tutorial plans for students, support plans for students. That's how we'd use this position. They would look at math plans. Our plan is that would happen with this position, pre-K through 12, but I could see a significant amount of the time with this being spent, again, on elementary, trying to close those gaps up early with specialized learning plans to support students. As we've looked again at third-quarter adjustments, we've had the need to add money for some special ed contracted services for non-public placements. So we've added money in the general fund budget to carry us through next year, these are estimates of what we would need. Also, with the struggling learners grant, we could support special ed students with additional resources. Again, these would be tutorial resources and things, so we've added $150,000 for that. The one grant, the restricted grant for the $83,000, requires additional money for the health coordinator to make that whole with benefits and everything, so that money's identified here, likely to work substantially with special ed, so we think that makes a good match for this position. Line 10 was our increase in home and hospitalization from $25 to $30 an hour, you've seen that change in the last budget. And line 11 and 12 are the Social Security and medical insurance for the positions identified in Section 5. So questions in Section 5 we can respond to? Section 6A, again, is restricted funds, or how we anticipate it to become is restricted funds. It's identified, $828,000. As you read, Senate Bill 1030, again, this is where it describes very specifically K to 3 reading, and you can support math if you've met the reading needs. What we've looked at right now is, we have been able to identify our students, but we haven't been able to provide the human resources to directly support the students with one-on-one or small group tutoring, which is described in Senate Bill 1030. So the plan right now is at least 10 of these positions would be deployed by our reading specialist, Lori Ridgely, Jody Smith. As they go to school, they identify students that need specific interventions. We now have, when the school says, "We don't have the resources to support that," we'd be able to deploy resources in the form right now of IAs, is how we've described our program. So for instance, there's a program called Stepping Stones, it's 25 lessons, 15 minutes a lesson across 25 days. School might have a dozen children that need that early in the year or mid-year if that's discovered. We'd be able to deploy these resources, person might be there, you know, in the morning and move to a different school in the afternoon, might be there for a month and be in a different school the next month. We would do something similar with that in math. Math's not quite as easy with specific interventions that we can identify that are, you know, a lesson that really has research-based impact. So we're actually still developing our plan in the mathematics, it might really need to be more of a teacher position to help support math intervention. But for right now, we put a placeholder, again, this is a restricted grant, has to be for tutoring, has to be for one-on-one instruction of the 20 IAs. We could use, I mean, one of our staff members in the reading department said we could use 100 of these positions to support the reading initiative. So it won't go for a lack of use if we don't use it for the mathematics as we anticipate right now. So we're still really nailing down this plan tight, but we feel like it's going to be an excellent opportunity to really close up that gap prior to third grade, not only with reading, but to help support mathematics as well. The next section, Section 7A, again, a restricted grant. This can only be used at Antietam Academy, we're not 100% sure that Antietam Academy's even going to qualify for this grant right now. You have to have a community schools coordinator position, so that's one of the things spelled out in the restricted grant. You also have to have a mental health support there, actually, is that, that is the mental health coordinator position. The $83,000, we've kind of combined these two things. So that part probably will survive, even if the Antietam Academy part does not survive. Contracted healthcare practitioner, that is part of that, part that would go to Antietam Academy. And then be some other contractual services, again, specifically to support Antietam Academy as described in that restricted fund. So not a lot of choice in Section 7A. If we take that grant, it's very, you know, laid out what we have to do with that grant if we accept it. Again, we may or may not be eligible for the Antietam Academy grant, we're still waiting to find that out. The last section, Section 8A, and to the end of the document, is exactly as it was in the original budget document. So those were line-by-line adjustments we made to pick up, I think, $700 and some thousand, $746,000 in redeployed funds, and none of that has changed through the rest of the document. We've made all the changes here in the front end. So with that, we have staff here that can respond to board member questions and...
Thank you, Dr. Michael.
We're looking to try to move forward this evening with this, it'll allow us to go ahead and start planning for the new school year. So we'll be seeking your approval on this budget this evening if possible. Thank you.
Questions, colleagues?
We do have a number of new positions as required by legislation.
Correct.
Do we have room for those people? Offices?
Yes, if they're located here, yes, we have, we have room. I would also say, Mrs. Fisher, the lines show that staff is in schools, or if they, you know, if they're sourced out of here, they'll be here very little, so it'll be a sort of a place to hang their hat on the little bit of time they're here, but the vast majority of staff that you see here in the budget is school-based. is school-based.
Do we have the, uh, transportation facilities for all the people who are going to be pulling out into, now? You know?
I mean, you know, but, no different than really where we are today in a sense that when, when, uh, when staff vehicles are available, staff sign them out or departments share vehicles as needed, and then we pay the IRS mileage rate, whatever it is, at any given point in time to staff so that they're, uh, taken care of for the, using their own vehicle.
Mrs. Fisher, any other questions you might have?
I think if we get, or as we get additional guidance from the state, there might be some things that'll change and morph in this budget. We'll bring those back to the board as quarterly adjustments if things change throughout the year. Um, you know, even our pre-K, you know, if we don't fill our 1,300-plus slots right now, I think we're about 150 or 60, uh, over pace of where we were at this time last year. So I don't know whether we'll fill or use all the 20 teachers or 21 IAs, but if we don't, we'll come back with quarterly adjustments for those types of things. If we have a different plan with our math intervention, we obviously won't waste the resource. We'll, we'll rethink how we would use those resources and, again, uh, bring those forward with, uh, quarterly adjustments in the upcoming budget. But, um, staff's worked hard to really think about the opportunities we've had with the addition of Kerwin money and what we might do. And again, I'm, I'm optimistic we're going to be able to, uh, enhance teacher pay, and, uh, I'm excited to get that, uh, out to teachers and other resources that we're going to have available for this year.
Nothing?
Hi, Will.
Yes, Mr. Backley.
Um, what would be the responsibilities of the new, um, mental health coordinator?
Mental health coordinator's been identified as the state, so they've just kind of identified the position. Last year during legislation, they said you had to have a mental health designee, uh, that was to provide wraparound services for students that identified with mental health needs. So we identified a person. Uh, I think we added a halftime position in Robin Handler's office, the counseling office. Um, I, I think what the, they realized was it really requires somebody specialized, uh, to do that, and now they're providing that through a restricted grant. So again, this is for the wraparound services. A child's identified with, uh, mental health concerns, try to connect them with mental health coordinators. Uh, it goes down through a whole list of housing, food, it's a whole laundry list of wraparound services, additional support services for students that have mental health needs.
Like this is, to Dr. Michael's point, the, the funding for this position came this year in SB 1030, the blueprint grant, for the position that the state required last year in Senate Bill 1265, which was the school safety grant. Or the school safety bill.
Okay. If there are no further questions, thank you, Dr. Michael. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And will, if there's anything else you want to discuss before we adjourn this work session? Nope? Okay. See you at closed session.